We will close the open hearing. Let the record reflect that we had no attendees from the public. And we will open our town council meeting officially for Monday, December the 9th. With this call to order, if you will stand if you'd like, we're going to say the Pledge of Allegiance, and then Mr. Helms will bless our meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we bow before you tonight. We thank you for another beautiful day. We thank you for keeping us safe through another year. We pray that you'll be with us tonight, guide us, direct us, give us the wisdom to conduct the towns of business. We give you the praise and glory for it all, in your holy name we pray.
Amen.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Council members, you have received the minutes from our November 25th, 2019 meeting. Are there any changes, deletions, or amendments?
I have a motion and a second.
Any further questions? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those that will approve the motion, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. Thank you so much. Public comment. Pursuant to Section 2-46 of the Code of Ordinances for the Town of Fort Mill, any resident may appear before council for the purpose of providing public comments on any municipal matter except personnel matters. Those who wish to speak must sign the public comment sheet prior to the start of the meeting. Do we have anyone signed in?
No ma'am.
Okay, thank you. There are no presentations this evening, so we'll launch right into old business items. Old business item number one. Second reading. An ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances for the Town of Fort Mill, Chapter 6. Buildings and building regulations, Article 2, Technical Codes, Section 6-26, Adoption of Standard Codes, so as to adopt the most up-to-date versions of the following codes, including all South Carolina modifications, the International Building Code, International Residential Code, International Existing Building Code, International Fire Code, International Plumbing Code, International Mechanical Code, International Fuel Gas Code, International Energy Conservation Code, National Electrical Code, International Property Maintenance Code, International Swimming Pool and Spa Code, and International Performance Code for Buildings and Facilities. Our expert this evening is Chris Pettit. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion, accept old business item number one.
Motion and a second.
Motion and a second. Christopher, do we have anything that has changed from the initial reading on this item?
It's the same as first reading.
Okay. Do we have any questions in regards to this? It's a housekeeping item that allows us to ensure that our codes are kept up to date with the most accurate codes around the world. Any questions? Hearing none, all those by show of hand in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. Thank you very much. New business items. New business item number one. Resolution to appoint and commission Chris, is it Alshir?
Alshir.
Alshir, excuse me. As a code enforcement officer for the proper security and general welfare for the Town of Fort Mill, Greg Rushing is our expert. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion, accept new business item number one.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. Hi Greg.
Hello. Any details you may want, Chris is one of our new inspectors for what I'm calling engineering services. We've been adding on to the utilities inspection to cover roads and just everything, and Chris is the only one that doesn't have code enforcement certification, and they probably see more violations than anybody does. But he's ready to take that under his wing.
Wonderful. Do we have any questions for Greg?
It'd be nice if he was here so I could see what he looked like.
Yeah, let's get him certified. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. Thank you Greg.
I have a comment.
Yes ma'am.
When it is certified, will you bring him back so that you can introduce him to us?
We will do whatever the council directs, yes ma'am.
Would you please do that?
All right.
We do like to get face value with all of our employees and be able to thank them in person. We appreciate it. We'll move to the information discussion items. Information discussion item number one, you may as well remain at the podium Greg, is a project update on Bass Street Tank and Wastewater Treatment Plant. All right?
Yes ma'am. Council and mayor, I thought we did this a couple of months ago, and it was July. So it's been a while since you've seen the updates unless you've gone by. Both of them are proceeding very quickly.
Mm-hmm.
And it's amazing what you'll miss if you haven't seen it, obviously, so. Chris? Just background on the existing treatment plant, plan, you see everything at the top of that is actually the planned new plant, in essence. It's not, it will be self-sustaining, but it starts at the headwork structure, the membrane area is at the very back end, the BNR tanks, biological nutrient removal, UV disinfection, the chemical feed, and the pretreatment. Facility PTR is right adjacent to the headworks there.
There's a river to our left as we're looking at it.
As we're looking at it, it is behind you.
In that picture there.
It's directly behind you. We're looking east here, and the river's back toward the west, or south, sorry. I've organized these pictures in terms of each different section so you can really keep up with them a little better. Start with the headworks, that's where obviously the project construction started, and you can see they dug a pretty big hole there, it's about 20 feet deep, and proceeded through the slab, obviously. We're going very quickly here, so, keep it going Chris. The back wall, you'll see where the walls are, will be where the pumps are, the rather large pumps. This is the influence structure, actually, where the main flow comes into the plant.
How big are those?
The one there that you see to the right is like a 36-inch, and then the one to the immediate left of that is much smaller, but it's a backfeed from the plant, say waste from the backside of the membrane, or any waste really from the plant that comes back and gets re-treated. More walls, that's the backside, the front side, they will have a slab on top of that, a free-floating slab at ground level. They're almost at ground level in that picture, and that was last week. This is the BNR section, the biological nutrient removal, the big tanks that just need resident time for treatment and the bugs to do their job. That was the first one, this is the end of July, so this was the last thing you saw. There's a lot of rock on the project. Everything is based on at least three feet of rock, and the pretreatment facility they're excavating now will have 10 feet of rock. We had some very poor soils in depth to support the slab. And the first slab to be poured, and the first wall section, they pour walls, obviously, in T's on the tanks to make sure the stress points are taken care of. And the wall. And then the slab there is almost at the end of BNR, where it transitioned into the membrane And then they come back and do the other side. There are two separate sides that can be combined into one when needed. Again, I haven't been on a nuclear project, but we have a lot of steel. A lot of steel, and that has a lot to do with it.
I was just sitting here thinking, I miss construction.
Yep. We had a lot of poor soils. This was where the drying beds were.
Incredible.
So you can imagine what was there beforehand. There it continues down to the south, and four more walls, four more rebar, and they just keep going. See how far we go. This section here begins the membrane section. You can see right in the middle, more electrical conduits than usual. Those are the ones going to the pumps. And as you get further down, where you see the water barrier is where the finish of the MBR, the other end of it, will be this, this was only a couple of weeks ago, I think. They poured that slab, and they poured one again today. So they are, I believe I've got a summary in there about where they are on schedule and expenditures. Just keep going Greg. There's a good shot of the entire length of the BNR. Let's see, this is the chemical feed. They poured more slabs of the chemical feed today. And honestly, it's nowhere near the size of the rest of it, but it's, has to be very well-done because it contains any spillage, or is designed to. And most of that is not, the only acidic is a citrus-type solution that cleans the membranes when we backfeed it. So that's the most mass of chemicals that we're going to have there. And there it is, it's, they're ahead of schedule. You'll see the contract time is 21, 22% completed, and budget work is 12.8. But believe me, they have schedules ad nauseam, and the critical path right now is the pretreatment facility that hasn't started yet. It's adjacent to the headworks, where the pumps are. And again, they have excavated now down 15 feet, so they can start putting in the 10 feet of rock for the base. It should be the tank. Has anybody not seen the tank from the road? After the leaves fell off, you can't help us it.
Can't miss it. It's not that distracting, though.
I've seen the big truck pull out of there today.
It's not as high as it's going to go.
Not figure as much.
That's just the concrete. This was in July, again, the last time you saw it. So it will move pretty quickly here. They do it from an internal crane, or they did it, they're done with concrete now. And they do it in those, I want to say five-foot sections.
All the steel work they were doing at the tops for the tank to sit on?
Um.
They were working a lot.
I'll show you a good picture of that as we get there. There were 18 sections of concrete, 18 lifts, and then they had to put the ring around it, and that ring is where the tank will actually sit when it gets there. The trick with composite tanks is, one more? No, we're doing visuals from around neighborhoods. And you see where the concrete starts. Well, keep going. And the base ring is where they're building the tank off of, the actual metal tank. That's the first one. The first two lifts of, or sections of steel, and that's the first vertical. As you can see, there are three or four verticals, I can't remember. They are not small. That's four. They will complete that, paint it where it sits, and jack it up. And it's not a quick process, it'll take them a whole day to get to the top, and then they will seal it off to that ring, and then they'll put a roof on top of it. But that roof is not near as structural as the rest of it, so it will go pretty quickly.
Eric, how many workers do you have out there at any given time?
Um, it varies a great deal. The concrete guys probably had 10 or more. The steel guys, I've only seen a maximum of about six.
The concrete guys left today, didn't they? I saw one of your trucks pulling out.
They haven't been there in a while.
Oh really? I saw the truck pulling out today with all the equipment on the back.
Mm-hmm. I would not doubt that the concrete guys are getting all their equipment out now. Because actually, most of the steel is done, there's a riser pipe sitting on site, you won't go on site very often, but that will go dead in the middle on top, and then they'll jack the, jack the tank on up. But they will finish it and paint it on ground level, and we had a visit by the paint supplier last week, and he said, "Any day now." The weather is probably going to have something to say about that.
Oh yeah.
The pipeline, just as an addition, they're blowing it off now from being chlorinated, so they're ready to go. Probably pressure test in the next week, and pull the back T's when they're pressure testing. And that should be about it, shouldn't it? Yep.
As per the norm, I think it's important to point out on the wastewater treatment plant, you know, the expansion includes a significant amount of upgrading to this facility. It will help us remain in regulatory compliance for what we're required to provide as a company of sorts, a municipality operating as a company for wastewater treatment. It allows us to become more efficient, the upgrades will help us with some of the odors from previous technologies, so I'm correct, right?
Oh yes.
Okay.
It's a complete odor control system.
We have done a phenomenal job on the financial end of things for this, and it will be a tremendous asset to the town as we move forward. So thank you for your work. That's music to my ears, ahead of schedule and under budget is always good. On the water tower, I had somebody ask me about it the other day, I think it's a beautiful sight, because it means that we had a donated location, we were able to get funding for this, and to have additional water resource for our community is an excellent addition. So I'm very pleased, these are extremely important projects for our community and our people, and thank you for being responsible and professional and doing all the things that are needed to guide them forward.
You notice at the side on the water tank, we've got a very decorative fencing around it, so it's nowhere near as pretty as it's going to be.
Good. Thank you. Any questions for Greg?
After the treatment center's finished, the water that we discharge back into the river is actually cleaner than the river.
The water that we currently put back into the river is much cleaner.
It's cleaner.
But Greg said he wouldn't drink it.
No, you don't drink it. It's probably, well.
I don't drink river water either.
Singapore does recycle all their water, so it is possible, it just, it's a lot more expensive to. Thank goodness we have a great drinking water source.
Yeah, out in Arizona, they recycle it, they use that for their irrigation water, not for the drink water.
On the concrete part, that just supports the tank, is that right?
That's it.
It's hollow inside?
It is completely empty inside, other than the piping.
So how many gallons of paint? I was wondering.
I have no idea.
If I saw the painting, I was curious.
A lot.
I'll take a few, a hundred.
We get a personal visit from the sales.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Sales guy, it's a pretty good sale for him.
I bet.
And we'll have our town logo.
Front and back.
I saw that, that's going to look nice. Good. Thank you. Thank you so much. Anybody have any additional comments? All right then. Thank you so much Greg, good presentation.
Yeah, thank you.
Very good presentation. All right, we have information discussion item number two. Our very own Davey Broom will give us an update on some town projects. Davey?
Thank you mayor, and if you will bear with me for a few minutes, I'd like to go over a few projects that's been going on. You know, during the month of November, our Public Works Department was busy hanging lights and building ground displays to preparation of lighting our downtown area for the holidays. But they also found time to complete a couple of projects on Main Street and around Main Street. First project I'd like to speak on is the Main Street crosswalks. Anyone that has visited our downtown area over the last few weeks has noticed our newly-colored crosswalks on Main Street. The photo that you see on the screen and in front of you is, is what the previous color scheme was on the bricks. It was their natural color and every years of, several years of traffic, they've just, they faded out. But we're very fortunate to have a vibrant Main Street, and with that comes an abundance of foot traffic. And we want, always want to provide a safe atmosphere for our visitors, that's very important. You, as town council, recognize that, recognize that and direct the staff to seek out opportunities to make Main Street safer. Staff met with Sacklin and Partner Transportation back in February, they were already fielding complaints then with traffic, foot traffic across Main Street and safety issues with the crosswalks not being very visible, and also with parking on Main Street, people not actually using the crosswalks. But they had some enhancements that they added to Main Street over the summer. Some of those included, they added 24-inch wide thermoplastic striping to each side of the crosswalks in hopes of making them a little more visible. They added the triangles which indicate that a crosswalk is, you're approaching a crosswalk about 35 feet before you get to a crosswalk. They added additional signage, as you see here in this photo, with the high-vis yellow or green, whatever, they may go by green, trying to make those crosswalks more visible. Once they completed that, it did enhance Fort Mill or help the Main Street area, but per your direction, it still did not actually make those crosswalks pop. And so we went out and looked for a product that we could put on these crosswalks to make them more visible, and so we came up with the color scheme, the red color scheme that they, that we've incorporated. Public Works staff went out and, on a Sunday, and painted all of Main Street, and you can see the red crosswalks in association with those 24-inch wide white stripes is much more visible.
Bless you.
Bless you.
If I could make a comment, and it surprises me that even with the new color, people still want to cross in between the two main crosswalks. Because I had to stop one day going up Main Street because there were about three or four people that had already started walking in between cars to cross the street.
I agree. You will have that from time to time, and, but I've also noticed that we are getting quite a bit of foot traffic across these as well, because they do, they can see them when they get out of their car.
They can see them, definitely, yes, yes.
So they have helped out in that manner. So, you know, the product that we tested is not a paint, it's more of a resin, so it soaks or seeps into the concrete and the brick work itself, and has a coating that will last, we're getting information that it will last five to seven years with heavily traveled automobile traffic. And we also, that added some grit, fine grit that went in with the product that would help it be a little more slip resistant. So it has, you know, when we met with the company, the color schemes, you could get creative with what color scheme you want. We've got, there are municipalities around the country that have gone with yellow, green, a combination of colors, they just, you know, some areas are more artsy, and they've gotten creative with how they do their crosswalks in the downtown area with this product. We feel like this red has done, is serving the purpose very well for our need.
Davey, I've had a comment or two about, you know, people prefer the brick look. I think the bricks were beautiful when we installed them, and I certainly have been to Richmond and other Williamsburg where there are streets of cobblestone down in Charleston. But they don't have the level of traffic, both foot and vehicular traffic, that our Main Street does. And to be honest with you, there are folks that travel entirely too fast on Main Street.
Oh yeah.
And I know that, you know, we pull the trucks, we do what we can without having, you know, officers on foot. We don't have meter maids and officers on foot on Main anymore. But the, we wouldn't have to cover up and do this if everyone were respectful, that this is an area where many people are indeed crossing the street to get to the vibrant businesses that are there. We're so lucky to have those that have invested in our business community downtown, we're very blessed to do it. The safety has to be first for us, so we've taken the actions that we can to at least highlight where the walkways are, and would appreciate it if everyone would use them. I have gotten out of my car myself and jotted across the street, nothing coming, but it's not the best habit. I will make myself walk down and use the crosswalks, and I hope that everyone else will as well.
The other dangerous thing is people loading and unloading small children and baby carriers on the street side.
Yes.
It's terrifying sometimes when people have their doors open and are trying to get out of their cars to frequent the businesses, and you have someone coming down the street that's not looking, and they're speeding, and it is very frightening. So we're all responsible to help each other, ensure that there's a safe way for each of us to visit Main Street.
That's correct. And mayor, we're trying to change behaviors with these crosswalks. We want to drive people to the crosswalks to not only use them, but also traffic that comes through town, we want them to get used to seeing those crosswalks. The good thing about this product is, you know, if it decides to change colors in a few years, or once it's worn out after five to seven years, we can, if we see that most everyone is using them properly, we can go with a more standard color, not really, but we have that option that we can do later on.
We get that three-dimensional one that looks like nails, you know, and everybody's slow down.
Yeah.
I've seen those, they're pretty cool.
I've seen some.
It's like a floating walk. But I appreciate the effort that was made to do this so that we had the least disruptive time that we chose to do the work, so we didn't cause any more frustration than necessary with our local businesses, because we want them to be successful and accessible to the community. So thank you so much for doing that, and our staff for taking that time on their weekend.
Yes ma'am. I will say, I'll finish up on this project by saying we have three other crosswalks to, one that stretches across Tom Hall, one across Claiborne, and one across Springs that we'll be addressing in the spring, once the temperatures rise a little bit, because another good thing about this product is the dry time does not take very long. In anything above 70 degrees, it's about a 30-minute dry time. Now, when we put it out a few weeks ago, we were, the temperatures were a little cooler, so that the dry time was closer to an hour, hour and a half. So because it's going to be a high-traffic area, we feel like we can address it with detours in the spring, and, you know, 30, 45 minutes have it opened, reopened, and ready for traffic, so we will make you aware before we start that project later on in the spring. Any other questions on that?
Thank you. We appreciate that.
Thank you. The next project I'd like to speak on is, recently, Public Works also added some no-parking-zone painting along the islands of the parking lot that are located back, the municipal lot behind the Hobos side of Main Street. We did this for, again, safety drove, drove that purpose. What we found was patrons were trying to, they were utilizing the parking against the islands, which were not designated parking spaces, and so in high-traffic areas.
You're talking about some place where that fire truck is parked?
Yes.
Oh.
In high-traffic time periods, it was causing the roadway to be narrowed, and we found that we were having vehicular accidents in there. And again, it was another safety concern with people walking through, crossing those crosswalks, and not being able to see clearly with the vehicles, so the next slide has a, you can see, we went up against the curb and put the no-parking out, and the next one pretty much is the same way, the length of it. Again, what we would ask is when, when this lot is full, that we've asked all, any patrons to come through to utilize the other parking, available parking in the downtown area. The town has a lot with 51 spaces on White Street beside the Veterans Memorial Lot, Veterans Memorial. There are also spaces on Railroad Avenue that are municipal owns, so. So, and there are short walking, just a short walk to Main Street. And so that's pretty much what I have for that project as well. Any questions on that?
I know it's, for those of us like Ronnie, Trudy, myself, we've been here for, I don't know, riding dinosaur days, but we didn't have parking problems because there were so few cars. And we were able to walk to Main Street from most of our homes and cross back and forth. And, you know, times have changed. I'm getting old and the changes have been fairly significant. So we have to look at a different set of objectives to keep everyone safe and able to get back and forth to those businesses. So I appreciate the patience of those that are willing to use the alternate parking that is provided. I'm appreciative for the Baptist Church for allowing us to use the back part of their parking lot. And for the businesses for, you know, their patience as they have to get materials in and out of their restaurants and their facilities. So it takes, it takes all of us pitching in to make this work and enjoy what we have on our Main Street corridor. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. The next thing I'd like to speak on is not a specific project, but it is the events that we just, that just recently were completed. We won't meet again for a televised council meeting until January. And I would be remiss if I did not speak on the people and the town staff, volunteers, and everyone that was associated with both the tree lighting event and the Fort Mill Christmas parade. Without them, we could not have pulled off either event. And I want to share my sincere thank you to each and every one of them. And if you'll allow me a few minutes, a few more minutes, excuse me, I'd like to call out a few names. Again, it was our town staff that pulled together. And we, our elementary schools courses that took place in our tree lighting event on our stage. We had our Riverview Elementary led by Mr. Billy Fox, our Tiggie K Elementary led by Ms. Jill Fuller, our Fort Mill Elementary led by Ms. Christine Newsom, and our Sugar Creek Elementary led by Ms. Erica Gabriel. I want to speak on Mr. Fox. Mr. Fox has been associated with the town for many years. From what I recall off the top of my head, it was 15 or more years that he and his chorers have participated in our tree lighting ceremony. To the tune that when we first began doing that, and I was in Public Works, I had to stand among the children, holding a portable CD player while they sang.
I remember that. I remember that.
So we have come a long way as a town and able to put them on stage.
Oh, my goodness.
We also want to say another thank you to the groups that helped us with our event from Five to Seven, the merchants program that took place. On the bandstand, we had the Walnut Grove Christian School Choir that sang chorals and Christmas songs during that time, during about an hour. And then we had some wonderful dancers from Momentum Dance that performed for us on the We want to thank all of our Main Street and downtown merchants for their participation in that event. Many of them come out on Main Street. I think if you saw the Barbershop Quartet, that was a huge hit from the Fort Mill Barbershop.
Moving up to the stage next year?
Yes. They were really good and talented, so we appreciate them. I also want to say a thank you to our Strawberry Queens, that they come out for all of our events and they are dedicated to us and the town. You have Haley Harden, Madison Cornwell, and Kristen Privet. So, and they're directed by Beth Vander Walker. And they do a superb job for us for all of our events. And I also want to thank for our, moving on to our parade for Saturday, there's too many people that I cannot name them all that helped pull that event off. But I do want to recognize our grand marshal for that, Mr. Stormy Young, that was in the Fort Mill school system for many years, is not only a teacher, but also an administrator. And he is, he is loved by many residents in Fort Mill. He was always, he's always a good person to talk to and has been, he's touched many, many children's lives over the years. And he and his wife both taught in the school system, and I actually, Ms. Young's taught me in seventh grade. And I was very appreciative to be able to speak with them on Saturday and drive them in the parade. So I thoroughly enjoyed that. But I do, again, want to say a thank you to everyone that participated in any facet of all of the events, because they were both a huge success and I'm very proud of Fort Mill and our ability to pull those off.
Thank you. I'd like to address a couple of items in regards to that as well. You know, we had a couple of people ask about the timing of the tree lighting event. And we began that tree lighting event in 1983, when the tree was donated by the town of Fort Mill and the Chamber in honor of Mr. Bill Close. And it was a special occasion that we wanted to continue throughout the years, and we have done so. We haven't made changes to the time, but I do think we certainly can look into that and see what efficiencies we can gain. Having the merchants participate was a huge benefit to the enjoyment of the community with hot chocolate and the music and the dancers and, oh my goodness, I felt very good about the movement of the stage down in front of the caboose and was very pleased that Santa agreed to hide out in the caboose for a little bit while we got ready for him. I loved how many people came and participated with us in singing and sharing a community moment as we lit. I think our downtown is absolutely beautiful. I would like to take the time, I know you said there are too many people to note, but Brown Simpson, Chris Sardelli, Debbie, Virginia, Philip, Chanté, Brian and staff, and Chipper and staff, and Jeff Helms and staff. It's incredible how many times I turned around and there was a city employee helping someone up a step or down a step or helping with a child in a carriage. The train rides were phenomenal. Got great feedback on, oh, let me forget you, Penelope, you were helpful too. We had folks handing out candy. We had people, helping people find the things they were looking for. And everybody had a smile on their face. And gosh, this is overtime for them. They'd already worked a full day and had already prepared for the event. And then they were there to, not just to celebrate with their families, but with us and ours. So there aren't enough thanks to go around for not just the hard work, but the demeanor of our employees. They truly put their heart into these events to keep us safe and to make it a truly beautiful event for the town.
One person, real quick, before we move on. One person that we often don't remember because he's not up front.
Tony.
It's Tony. Because every production we do is a production.
Yes.
And he's always the man behind the curtain that really makes all the magic happen and not only pulls it all together for that night, but then so eloquently puts it on video for us afterwards so that we can enjoy it on the website, on the TV channel, everything.
Couldn't do it without Tony.
Tony McManahan, thank you.
Thank you, man behind the curtain.
We had the elf on the shelf handing out candy.
It was just incredible to have that much participation in an event that's that sweet. It is just a sweet event for the community. I love it. It's one of my favorites. Christmas parade was the best I've ever seen. The weather participated, everybody was in high spirits. It's the most people I've ever seen on the route. And I've been doing this parade since I was, well, I watched the parade when I was a toddler, but I was actually in the parade in middle school. So it's been an event that I've watched grow. And it's wonderful to be able to see face-first, everybody in our community there to celebrate together, the opening of a season and looking for their children and the things that they participate in. I saw karate people kicking through wood. It was just amazing how wonderful that was. So it doesn't happen without the work of the individuals in our town staff. We've got the best staff in the whole country. I'm just so pleased and thankful. And thank you for your management and guidance of each and every one of them. So council will...
Ms. Close, was that the Christmas tree lighting and said she's not missed one yet?
Yeah, and if you missed the tree lighting and you wonder about why we added the tree up on the hill, I think it's important to note that, you know, for, since 1983, that tree has grown, but it wasn't ever going to be a tree that lasted forever. It's not a great redwood. It's an evergreen tree. And we've been spray painting it for a couple of years to cover the holes that were happening. So we have to look forward. We will never, how can you replace the memory of someone that was so generous with our community and so loving in our community? You can't do that. But what we can do is continue to honor his memory by ensuring that our event grows and that we continue to give that love back to our community. So we're not, we're not ditching a tree. We're trying to add value and keep that remembrance going. So that tree isn't exactly going away, we're just transferring the memory to another one.
Absolutely.
Okay. What I love about the parade too, I mean, like you said, been doing it for so many years and participating and on the sidelines for some, but you know where people are going to be. I always know Jean and Brenda Irvin are going to be sitting right outside of St. John's Church, you know, and you know where they're going to be every year after year. So it's always fun as you're driving through to see those faces. But, you know, just like the Youngs, the teachers that we have, that like you said, while it's been, I'd like to think it's only been about five years since I was in school, it's been many more than that. Now that I have something out of there. But they still remember you and they're still waving and on the sidelines and they don't forget. So it's, it is a very dear and memorable event year after year. And the weather is great. We've been them rainy ones before. We love the sunshine.
I do think it's, it is something that we could all think about, is that no matter how much we grow, if we're all dedicated to growing the sense of community that we have and the connectivity that we have, that doesn't change. It only changes if we let it. So I'm very grateful for the efforts of each and every one of you and for this council for making those events available for our community. Thank you. It's a lot of fun to do it with you. A lot of fun to do it with you. We have no further items on our agenda, so if we want to do an end-of-the-year quick roundhouse, Larry?
Beginning of the end of the year, I'd like to personally thank Virginia for what she does for us, that we would be starving, among other things. I live in Whiteville Park as Congresswoman, Congress, Councilwoman, Trudy does, and a lot of people walk through that neighborhood. And it makes no difference if they're sidewalks or not, they're walking in the street with their back to traffic. And one of our town employees was walking on Hill Street, walking east, and he was facing traffic like he should, and the car started veering off of the road right toward him.
Oh, dear.
And he jumped over into the cemetery and the mirror of the car still hit him. And if he'd been walking with his back to traffic, he could have had very serious injuries. And I've seen ladies dressed in black pushing black baby carriages in the dark.
Me too.
Yeah.
Me too. Please be safe, it gets dark so early these days. So please be safe.
And they're always talking about our employees and, I know quite a few, I know quite a few farmhands, policemen, and public works, and I don't know of a bad apple in the crowd.
No, we're very brave.
It's so nice, and I appreciate that.
Jamie?
Just wanted to, I talked to Ms. Close and I was talking to Representative Felder at the Christmas tree thing, and they were telling me when the tree was first planted, there was no big ceremony. They were actually, could hold hands around the tree and would just sing carols themselves. I mean, to think of what it's grown to from that humble beginning, but to still have the spirit that was established at that point in time is something, a testament not only to our staff and the people of our town, but the people who come here looking for that small-town feel and that small-town joy that they've been searching for all this time are participating into it also. Some people, they look for that, but then they never really get off their feet to help preserve it. They're more taking than they are the giving. But I haven't seen that. I mean, we've been very blessed with the newcomers of our town, both as in-staff and in residents of the area. So 2019's been trying, it was a little bit difficult, but I'm pretty excited about where we're going in 2020. And then as the parade goes, I love the fact that we can have these huge marching bands and then we'll just have two or three people who just want to be part of it. And they're in there promoting their little dog-walking thing or whatever it is. I mean, that's what our town is all about. It's not about the big hoopla. We're not New York, we're not, you know, Florida, we're just Fort Mill. But that's a lot to be said.
Secrets out.
It is.
Secrets way out.
I'm allowed to be part of it.
Me too.
I think we do Fort Mill well.
I think we do too. Lisa?
So I can't go without saying, I'm excited to be serving for another four years. Glad with it, we're past campaign season though, and that we can do the work of the town and hopefully put some of the ideas and suggestions and direction that this council and this town wants to see. I will say with the Christmas holidays, it's neat to ride through the neighborhoods. I remember, again, the years growing up here, there was only a few neighborhoods to ride through and look at lights. We used to ride through White Grove because it was always neat. And now en masse, you wouldn't believe the competition going on. If you want, you know, your kids to really see some good lights, I'm sure the Power Bills, Duke Power will love us and York County Electric or York Electric will. Because there's some pretty neat light shows going on around. It's amazing how much energy people are bringing to their homes and decorating for the holidays and for Christmas. It's also very neat to see families coming together, friends and neighbors coming together. We've got a friend of ours that's struggling with their child being in the hospital. I know there's been others in our neighborhood. And instantly, while social media can be a struggle, especially after a campaign season, it is neat seeing people come together, offering help and support in loving and touching ways. And it's really the beauty of what social media can be. So I hope we'll continue to treat everybody that we come in contact with like family, because that is what makes Fort Mill Fort Mill. So Merry Christmas, everybody, and hope you have a wonderful new year.
Merry Christmas to you too. Trudy Bing?
Well, everybody's talking about the parade, and I was just glad that I could be in it this year. Last year I was sick. And I understand that they had the car and the driver and my name on the side of it in the parade, but I wasn't there.
Missing in action.
Missing in action. I wasn't home in the bed with something, so I'm not sure what it was. But I too thought that the parade and the tree lighting were just something that I, that the town had not experienced before. I think that moving the tree lighting was definitely the right thing to do. I'm not going to repeat everything that everybody has already said. But again, I think that we do try to welcome newcomers into our town. I, for one, being on the school board prior to the council, I guess the best thing to do is when you move in, one of the first people that I encountered with the Chamber of Commerce came to me as a new person, and he said, what my wife and I try to do is when we move into a new place, our philosophy is we move in and fit in. We don't try to move in and try to change things. We just move in and try to go with the flow of things, which is good, and change is not always bad. But I think that the changes that we've made this year for the parade and the tree lighting were very, very good. And look forward to 2020. Merry Christmas.
Good morning. Chris?
Yeah, parade was really nice. I've never driven a vehicle that nice probably my entire life, probably never will ever again. I started out in a 1987 Dodge Caravan, it was my mom's, and so to get behind that wheel was pretty, it was pretty exciting. But it was good to see everybody, a lot of faces on the streets and just, I don't know, you know, really kind of, when you start getting into these Christmas events, that's when you start feeling the, for me, the kid part of Christmas coming back out, you know, like getting excited about it. So it was really a good time. Y'all staff, y'all did great. So thank you for everything and hope you have a good Christmas.
Ron?
Everything's good. Everything was good this weekend, this week, all the events. Merry Christmas to everybody. Merry Christmas to everybody.
Thank you. May each of you show and be shown kindness in 2020. May you all have all that you need, and may you enjoy the peace and joy that comes with this season. Thank you for allowing us to work with you and to serve you. Merry Christmas. I'll entertain that motion for adjournment now.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I got a motion in a second, all those who say, please say aye.
Aye.
And we're done for 2019. Thank you.